Good evening, I'd like to go to Lawrence City Council meeting to order. Today's Tuesday, June 4th. Mr. Clerk, roll call please.
Counsel Vasquez.
Present.
Counsel LaPlante.
Here.
Counsel Tumi.
Here.
Counsel Reyes.
Present.
Counsel Almonte.
Here.
Counsel Aquino.
Present.
Counsel Bruno.
Present.
Counsel Vice President Rivera.
Present.
And Counsel President Moran.
Here, please rise for a moment of silence for Enrique Lantigua, which is the mayor's father, who passed away yesterday. Our thoughts and prayers are with him and his family. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselors, I'm looking for a motion to accept the minutes for May 14, May 21st, and May 28th.
So moved.
Ready, second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All, the ayes have, and next item on the agenda is public participation. Participants, you have two and a half minutes to state your comment. After two minutes, the bell would ring. You have 30 seconds to wrap up your comments. Please address the city council as a whole, not as individual. First participant, Dick Russell. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name's Dick Russell, 34 Cross Street in Lawrence. My sympathies to the Lantigua family. Several questions about city charter, city ordinances. Both of them give individual rules and regulations to follow, but there's something lacking. Penalties. Section 4.10A, the city charter requires the mayor to notify the council president in writing if he's absent from the city for more than three successive workdays. I'm pretty certain that this did not happen, yet no penalty for this apparent violation. Section 3.04.120, the city ordinance prohibits any employee of the city from receiving more than $50 in their official capacity as a city employee, yet there's no penalty for violating this ordinance. Who authorized the parking attendant to accept cash only at the museum parking garage monthly permits? As I understand, these permits exceed $50 maximum. Again, no penalty specified for violating the ordinances. Obviously, there are those who see no penalty, must assume that it's okay to ignore or break the various laws that they don't find are their liking. The city charter and city ordinances are supposed to be the Ten Commandments of the government. There's no penalty for breaking the Ten Commandments until you were in the great hereafter. Unfortunately for the citizens of Lawrence, there is no hereafter for the people breaking our commandments of government. Several items that might have some impact on the upcoming city budget. Is there a satisfactory outcome for Tom Sapienza and the Tim Atwood situation? Is anyone prepared to show the public the logic for the jump in the funds allocated for various departments from FY12 to FY13, and the sudden decrease in the same departments from FY13 to FY14? Finally, have any of you counselors figured a way to prevent the mayor from publicly urinating away city funds to try and hide something? Anyone who invests $61.81 and turns it into $32,178.51 is a financial genius. Someone who spends $32,178.51 of public money to prevent the release of public records worth $61.81 is, to quote Howie Carr, "a bleepin' crook." Plain and simple. And this doesn't cross the county of Duggan and the Valley Patriots' legal fees that the city might be responsible for any appeals that may be forthcoming from the mayor's office. With that, I close my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Joe D'Amico. Name and address for the record, please, Joe.
Joe D'Amico, 11 Lorenzo Road, South Lawrence, Mass. I'm here to talk about the budget. I know it's kind of early. But, we've had four budget raises. We went 2.5 percent every year for the last four. I can do a budget that way. There's something wrong with the picture. Just getting 2.5 percent every year increases. I'm not against the fire department, I'm not against the police department. There has to be other ways to cut. In the past, people have mentioned overtime, records. Where is it on the website? People taking excess workdays. I don't assure. Vacation days. Does any of you guys know how many vacation days an employee takes? It should be in personnel. Do they exceed their... Ten years ago, there was a proposal in front of the council because a director left, and he claimed that he was owed a half a million dollars worth of... A lot of money. For not taking days off. That was supposed to have been cured. Beginning three years ago, we gave away $100,000 to four different individuals. Is that going to keep on going on? All I'm saying is, we're looking to save money. The mayor has mentioned before, he was going to watch the budget, watch who's spending what. All I can see in the paper or off the website, transfer of funds here, transfer of funds there. The other thing I wanted to mention is, all these parks that we've been building lately, 77A Newbury Street, at one time was worth $800,000. Now it's a park. Rutter's Laundry, income coming in. Mechanic and Union Street, other property where multiple units, no money coming in. Blakely Building, Jackson Lumber, Commonwealth Motors, Muffin's Business, they all got tax incentives. Their tax rate don't go up. They get savings, what happens to us landlords? We don't get a saving. And if we do a reevaluation and say, bring up the value of the houses, this is going to look like the 1980s. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Next participant, Maria Veronica. Name and address for the record, please.
Maria Veronica, teach, 31 Seer Drive. I'm here to request the use of the Commonan Park for an event called Rumba en El Parque.
You gotta wait for... We're going to be talking about that on the committee reports.
Okay.
Next participant, Mark LaPlante. Counsel LaPlante.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm just going to say a few words to thank you all for your condolences, for your best wishes on the passing of my mom recently. It meant a lot to me that each one of you has expressed your condolences and sympathies to me. It reminds us once again that while we're here, we certainly are working on the people's business, but we're all human beings. We all have families, we have loved ones, and there's a human element to our lives. And despite the oftentimes perhaps confrontational or emotionally charged debate, when we do leave here, we do go back to our families, we do have lives, we are real people. And the fact that you all recognize that, and despite our differences on many occasions, it meant a lot to me to get that response. My mom was very proud of me being on the city council. She was very proud of the work that I did. She would often ask me... She would often ask about the mayor, because she knew about our relationship, and would always wonder what I would be doing and why I was never winning many of the votes. And I was always on the 8-1, 7-2, 6-3 losing side of stuff. But she was very proud of me, and as I explained to her, this is part of what we do here in the city council. She is appreciative. And I also had a very... Back when I was on the council previously for four years, I actually represented District D. in Tower Hill, and I had the chance and the honor to represent both my parents when they were alive. And that meant an awful lot to me to actually have an opportunity to... For the very people that brought you up, to be able to then represent them was a very special four years for me. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, the council president, to all the counselors, and to those observers tonight at tonight's meetings that might be hearing this, for their good wishes and condolences. Thank you.
Thank you. Next participant, Counsel Vashia Rivera.
Thank you, Mr. President, and counselors, and folks at home. I rise as a member of the community today, because last week we got a... Mayor Lantigua presented a budget to this council that raises taxes $3,475,000. This is probably about the ninth time, ninth year in a row that we've gone to the levy limit and taxed homeowners and businesses. Well, I believe that both the budget director and the overseer and the administration did a good job finding how to keep the firefighters on staff. I still feel that there's a large problem with this budget, that you can see right off the bat, and that is that there's not one new police officer in this budget. Not to mention that the officers that are home being paid also make the department shorthanded. The problem with this budget also is that it does have eight new positions in it. They're not police officers, they're not public safety officers. They're positions that only the mayor will be able to hire, and that's okay if you trust the mayor to hire the most qualified people. So, if you think about the numbers, you take eight new positions from this year, plus the two new positions from last year that I felt weren't necessary, DPW positions that were currently held by the mayor's former secretary and the recycling coordinator, that's 10 positions that are not public safety that we could use in this year. And if you take all that money that's supposed to be spent on those 10 positions, it creates $485,000, enough for seven police officers. And that's important, because it's not the 40 that we need. We're 40 short of our target need for the city. But it brings us closer, and who knows, it might bring back the anti-noise pollution squad, or even help with the drug problem and the delinquency that we have in this community. The mayor said the department that gets the most phone calls is the DPW department. I believe it's actually the police department, and they probably have more urgent calls. So, I make a request to everyone in this community, if you want safer streets, and you want... We need to add those police officers to this budget. So please call your city counselors and ask them not to vote for any budget that doesn't have new police officers in it. There's money there, I just showed you where you can get seven. So I would call your city counselors and ask them not to vote for any budget that doesn't have new police department personnel in it. Because if we pass a budget without any new police department personnel in it, this summer and fall, when we have noise complaints, well, God forbid somebody breaks into your car, and you call the police department, and they say, "We are shorthanded, can you come down and fill out the report in the station?" It'll be because they're shorthanded. And this budget shows that the mayor wants to raise taxes, and with those taxes, we could have some of the needed manpower. We could. It's the manpower we need to fight the lawlessness that we have in this city. And if that means that some ball fields take a little longer to cut the grass, and it takes a little bit longer to clean the street, so be it, because safety is first. And the mayor may be right to raise taxes $3,475,000, but we should show the people that that money went to good use, and right now, the best use for that money is to put more police officers on the street. So please call your... And just as an aside, anyone who read today's Eagle Tribune can tell, a gentleman who had his liquor store robbed, they went back for more. So, the only way you fight that is with more police officers in the street. I'm not saying that that could have absolutely prevented that situation, but I tell you what, there's a sense of lawlessness in this community, and we need cops for that. So, I would encourage you to call your city counselors, myself included, and let us know not to vote for any budget that doesn't have new police officers in it. Thank you.
That ends public participation. These names will be submitted to the city clerk's office to be archived. Next item on the agenda is public hearing, document 125 appropriation transfer from fire department salaries and wages to motor vehicle for $77,487. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 125, 2013, notices hereby given the city council to hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 4th, 2013, in city council chambers, 200 Common Street, at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed appropriation transfer of funds as follows, from fire department salaries and wages permanent to the amount of $77,487 to fire department motor vehicles in the amount... Same amount, $77,487. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is not open. Anybody wish to be heard? No, public hearing is not closed. Counselor, what's your pledge?
I'd like to make a motion to deny the request.
Go ahead, here's a second.
Second for discussion purposes.
Second, Counsel LaPlante.
Thank you. I could ask the author of the motion why he wants to deny it?
I just think that I heard the testimony down in the subcommittee, I actually voted against in the subcommittee. We do have capital needs. We're just talking about the roof over at the engine house, and I just think sometimes the squeaky wheel guts the oil, in this case, the squeaky truck got the oil. So, there's $77,000 here. Initially, I was talking about leaving it in personnel so that we could maybe deal with the impending issue for the firefighters, but I think that when there's money left over, our initial reaction is to spend it. And I think that the administration has a good track record of increasing our free cash, and this is money that if it doesn't get used, you can go to free cash.
Could I ask, to you, Council President, I know that the fire chief is here, and I'm presuming he was the individual who decided to put the on the agenda, as to... Can you make a compelling case as to why I should vote for this?
Chief. Name and address for the record, please, chief.
Good evening, Jack Bergeron, 240 Forest Street, Fire Chief here in the city of Lawrence. The vehicle that we're looking to replace is a 1997 F-350. It's 16 years old. It's a boom truck, used by the fire alarm electricians. The boom was originally taken from a van that we had back in 1981. Last year, we actually spent $9,700 in repairs to that truck. And yes, estimated repairs to get it back in shape just for the boom this year would be over $20,000. Vehicle has failed its mandated yearly inspection. Again, it's used by the fire alarm electricians. They maintain 418 street lights in the city, as well as 71 traffic light intersections. I have a handout. Give to the counselors. Thanks.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So, let's just hypothetically, if we don't pass this, what does that mean? And obviously, you only have one truck, instead of two, what does that mean to... What kind of issue do I have on the city?
Last year, the council thankfully approved adding another fire alarm electrician, you know, to our staff. The amount of work that we have to do in maintaining the traffic lights, the street lights, these electricians also maintain all the municipal fire alarm circuits. We need, you know, two trucks in service so that we can do this work. For instance, when a traffic light goes down, I'll often get a call from, you know, one of the counselors here, you know, "Chief, when can we get the light back up in operation?" If I don't have the equipment to do that work, it's just not going to get done, or it's, you know, it's going to be delayed. We have other work planned, we have some streets, like for instance, Counsel Reyes has been asking me quite for some time now about installing a turn signal over on Lawrence Street, Lawrence and Maple. It's something that my electricians can do, but again, now we have that opportunity, we were able to bring on that new electrician, you know, just in the past couple of months. We have the manpower, we have the equipment to do that. There's a slight, you know, expense involved in doing that, but we need, you know, the boom truck in order to get that work done.
So just so I'm clear, my last question and a comment. So, out of all the things that a fire department needs at this point, because you could transfer this anywhere else in the fire department within your budget, of course, with the council approval, this is the one item that you think that you need to focus on at this point?
Looking at the amount of money that we have available right now at this time, and recognizing the need that we have, again, in maintaining the traffic lights, which is a safety item, the city's municipal fire alarm circuits, as well as the street lights, it's imperative that the truck gets replaced.
And my one comment is that you're taking requests from city counselors on traffic signals, chikering, Winthrop Ave, there's a delay that I've been getting some calls on. If you could help with that, maybe that's the first order of business that would be useful.
I believe they just... I'm not sure exactly where it was on Winthrop Ave, but that they just installed a cross signal as well, you know, for a crosswalk.
Thank you. If you could take a look at that, I appreciate it.
Our question.
Thank you.
Counsel Rivera. Chief, can you explain to us how we have quarter of a million dollar surplus in personnel money?
Yeah, I have seven unfilled positions in my department.
So, just as a follow-up to that, so are we budgeting for those seven unfilled positions for next year?
No, we are not.
I mean, it's nice that we get, like, this money back in surplus, but wouldn't it have been nice to have 160K last year this time? I think we're rewarding bad budgeting here, if we pass this. Thank you.
Maria, Counsel Tumi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, assuming that this doesn't go through this season, the $77,000 will just remain in your account, correct?
It will up until the, you know, the budget's closed out.
Till the end of the year, and then it'll wind up next year probably in the general fund.
Correct.
To be utilized in whatever way possible, right? To be utilized in other ways, could be.
Yes, but, well, again, the way I understand it, maybe Budget Finance Director can explain it a little bit better.
Yes, Fire Chief is correct. The balance in his account will be returned to the general fund after the books are closed at June 30th.
Okay, and he still would be left without a truck?
Can you say that again, counselor?
He would still be left without this additional truck that he...
That's correct. I mean, this truck would still be a need of his department.
All right. And the surplus that they're talking about here, that's about a quarter of a million dollars here, this is due to the fact that the seven firefighters were not put on roles this year? And that was basically, I think, if I understand correctly, it was because of a time problem? In other words, you couldn't put them on because you haven't got them available to put on?
That's partially correct. Due to a number of factors, one of them, you know, is civil service, we have to hire, you know, people through the civil service system, which is administered by the Commonwealth. And it's been... Actually, right now, there is no list available for us here in Lawrence, so we cannot hire.
Okay, now, this $6.6 million grant that we got is going to run out in August of this year, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is that quarter of a million part of that $6.6 million?
Excuse me?
Is that quarter of a million dollars that we're talking about a part of that $6.6 million? Because you were unable to bring these fire officers, these firemen on board?
We've actually been charging that grant for 38 firefighters. What'll happen at the end of August, when that grant money runs out, the city, again, if the budget's approved, as it's been presented, will pick up the funding for 31 firefighters, 31 positions.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Just one last question. Just for Mr. Anau. So this money will go back into the general fund and be seen as free cash, be certified as free cash?
Yes.
What did we use free cash for this past year?
A number of capital improvements. I don't have the list in front of me, but we used... We had roughly $5 million of free cash, and we have another proposal in front of the council as we speak.
So, we bought capital stuff with it?
Exactly.
And are we going to use any of it to do snow and ice?
We may. We're hoping, we have an order before the council to use a little bit of free cash for snow and ice, and hopefully we'll complete the remaining deficit out of year-end transfers.
So then the chief could actually go through the process and get on the list of capital improvements, and/or maybe not get it, because we may need it for snow and ice, right? We may need the free cash for snow and ice.
Well, free cash is subject to... Is really unlimited as to use. You can use free cash for anything that's available for municipality to spend.
Counsel President?
Counsel Almonte.
Thank you. How soon, if this was to pass tonight, how soon will the purchase of this truck happen, and when could we see it in service?
As soon as we possibly can. The truck that we're replacing right now, we're just using it for transportation, we cannot use the boom in the truck, again, because it is unsafe. And again, because of the age of the boom, it would be, you know, to actually try to make repairs to that boom, be just throwing good money away. Because the truck itself, the frame is rotted, the bed of the truck is rotted.
And what are the plans for that specific truck after the new one has been bought?
It'll probably end up going to the DPW. I mean, we have, again, we've got grant money this past year, just as an example, you know, to replace a ladder truck. The old ladder truck right now is over at the city yard, and at some point, I expect it'll be sold off as salvage.
Thank you.
There's a motion on the table to defeat this item. It was second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No. Roll call, please.
Counsel Vasquez.
No.
Counsel LaPlante.
No.
Counsel Tumi.
No.
Counsel Reyes.
No.
Counsel Almonte.
No.
Counsel Aquino.
No.
Counsel Bruno.
No.
Counsel Vice President Rivera.
Yes.
And Counsel President Moran.
Chair, no. Looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call.
Counsel Vice President Rivera.
No.
Counsel Bruno.
Yes.
Counsel Aquino.
Yes.
Counsel Almonte.
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Tumi.
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante.
Yes.
Counsel Vasquez.
Yes.
Counsel President.
Yes. Mission carries. Next item on the agenda is document 132, Handicap Parking on West Kenneth Street. Mr. Clerk, please read the notice.
Document 132, 2013, notices hereby given, the city council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, June 4th, 2013, in council chambers, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. at 7:00 p.m. The purpose of said hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning proposed amendment. To the advised ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by... Do they advise ordinances for the city of Lawrence to be amended by adding a following new paragraph to the municipal code of handicap parking to be inserted in proper order? West Kenneth Street, East Side, from .55 feet southerly of the intersection of Inman Street to .75 feet southerly of the intersection of Inman Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity as published.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody wish to be heard? No? Public hearing is now closed. Councillor, worship pledge.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion?
Discussion, Council Bernal.
Um, just as we've been doing with handicap parking spaces, if we could waive the 30 days on this, I would be grateful if we could amend the motion.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Senator, agenda is communication from Mayor, City's officials, the city attorneys. There's none. Appropriation orders are resolution, document 152, resolution for Rafael Guzman. Item was submitted by Council Vasquez, Council Vasquez?
Thank you, Mr. President. With all the respect that you and the council respect, uh, deserves, I'm going to stand and, and read it from the podium.
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening, fellow councillors and members of the community. It is with a great honor that I stand here tonight. It is with great honor that I stand here tonight next to this wonderful person who has done a great job in the city of Florence, and as a result of that, I would like to present a resolution tonight. And it reads as follows. "We, the members of the Lawrence City Council, of the city of Florence, Massachusetts, by and through this resolution, hereby recognize and honor the achievement of Rafael Guzman and state as follows. Whereas Rafael Guzman came to Lawrence from the Dominican Republic in 1981 at the age of 15, in graduating from Lawrence High School, after earning a degree in electrical and computing engineering with the high honors from the University of Massachusetts in Amherst, and later attending Boston University, studying manufacturing engineering as a postgraduate. Whereas, after having worked at the former Honeywell Company, Rafael sought financial independence as a, as an entrepreneur, working and investing in Lawrence, starting Flexible Workforce, an environmental temporary employment agency in 1994, to provide employment opportunities and also purchasing the Molder Mill Buildings on Broadway in partnership with the Lawrence Training School, investing $600,000 in renovation costs to help provide education to those who are seeking employment opportunities. The former Molder Mill Buildings also serves as home to another 11 small businesses. Whereas, as a result of his successful financial venture with Flexible Workforce, Rafael took advantage of the opportunity of purchasing RM Technology, a construction company specializing in demolition and environmental remediation. Rafael recently served as the president and chief executive officer overseeing an expanding portfolio, a staff of 200 people, and annual revenue of more than $7 million. Whereas Rafael Business, accumulated, has also received a recognition throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, being awarded the 2013 Immigrant Entrepreneur Award for Business Growth from the Immigrant Learning Center Incorporated, and being one of the three local business people from Lawrence nominated as a recipient for the Outstanding Neighborhood Business Award. Whereas, as an active businessman in Lawrence, Rafael understands the importance of giving back to the community, and sets the example by establishing the RM Technology Scholarship for $5,000 to provide financial educational assistance to aspiring engineer, engineers. Whereas Rafael also supports local organizations such as De La Mano, the Lawrence Book Fair, and the Granite State Baseball League for, for men over 30 years of age, where he plays on the Lawrence Pirates, winning the league championship the last two years. Whereas Rafael credits his parents as the source and cause of his success, where his father Rafael worked to support his family as a taxi driver, and his mother, Chichi, raised their seven children, imparting him as a strong work ethic and even stronger set of family values. Whereas Rafael Guzman's success and achievements are eclipsed not only by, by the love he shares with his parents Rafael and Luz, and his sons Rafael, Benny, and Javier. Wherefore, we, the members of the City Council for the city of Florence, Massachusetts, by and through this resolution, hereby recognize and honor the success of achievement of Rafael Guzman, and cause the CEO of the city of Florence, Massachusetts to be affixed here to this day, and it was signed by all members of the Lawrence City Council. Congratulations."
Thank you to the City Council, and I want to take this opportunity to express my condolences to Mayor LaPlante, the passing of your mother, and also to our, to our mayor, my friend William Antigua, the passing his father. I also wanted to take this opportunity, I brought here Alexander Santos and Jacare Noah, who has been working with me since the late 90s. They came in working for my company as clerical office support staff. Jacare is now the general manager. She runs over 200 guys, mostly Laurentians. The reason that I want to express that is because it's all about opportunity. It's creating opportunity that this city needs. You know, as a contractor, I, we work all over New England, and let me tell you, I mean, I sadly have to say that the perception that outsiders have of our city is not very good lately. It's not good for business, it's not good for anybody. And the City Council is a counterbalance to the executive power of the city, has as much responsibility to that fact as any one of us here in the city of Lawrence. And so, I encourage you guys to be more proactive and vocal in expressing the positive things that this city has to offer. Because let me tell you, I graduated from Lawrence, right, in 1983, and I've been working in this city for 30 years. There are great peoples here. We have to let the world know that, right? So, thank you for this opportunity, for this honor, for this distinction. I'm happy to be a Laurentian, I'm very proud to be a Laurentian. Okay, I'm very also proud to announce that this year, we'll pay around $5 million in wages and salaries. And I started all this stuff with my 401K for Honeywell, $11,000 back in 94. It's taking the opportunity and season, create the opportunity through training and education, which is what the city needs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is document 153, Resolution for Bridget Batances. I had a conversation with Council Vasquez. Ms. Batances is not here today, she's getting another award in Boston today, we're very proud of her as well. Looking for a motion to table this item?
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye savage. Next item on the agenda is document 161, Resolution for Comprehensive Immigration Reform. This is a, a resolution that, that I will be presenting to Elia Alvarado. She is the Latino Caucus Coordinator for the SEIU 1199, and is, I'm glad to hear Danielito said, you know, how important it was for him as an immigrant to commit into the city, and not asking for a handout, but asking for an opportunity to do better, to do great, and to move the city forward. And he's an example, and, you know, we're very proud of Danielito. And I have a resolution here that I'm going to be presenting to Elia. Is Elia here?
And the resolution asks, let me make sure that I can read this over this. And the resolution says, "We, the members of Lawrence City Council for the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, and throughout this resolution, hereby support comprehensive immigration reform and urge action from the 113 Congress as follow. Whereas the identity of the city of Lawrence is defined by its promise of equality, esteem for diversity, and commitment to innovation. And whereas the city of Lawrence of our community have prospered because of the contribution of hard-working individuals, aspiring citizens, and whereas we believe in the human dignity of all Laurentians regardless of immigration status, and recognize the importance of immigrants, many contributions to the social and economic fabric of the city of Lawrence. Whereas becoming a citizen in the United States means taking a solemn oath to uphold our nation's constitution. Whereas citizenship is an important symbol of full membership and participation in society that should be encouraged and not barred. And whereas keeping families together not only is the right thing to do, but is also for the economy, because family provides a base of support that increases productivity and, and inspires entrepreneurship. And whereas immigration enforcement will be much more efficient and effective once the number of undocumented immigrants in our midst is reduced due to immigration reform. And whereas America's current immigration system is dysfunctional, harms our economic, our economy, and does not reflect our community, our nation, and our nation's values. Whereas immigration is a federal responsibility and comprehensive approach to solve a broken immigration system, will, will strengthen the Lawrence community and our nation's economy by allowing aspiring citizens the freedom to make an even greater contribution to our community and country. And whereas the federal government, federal government's inability to enact immigration reform has created, created several economic, cultural, and political strains here in all communities across America. Whereas immigration reform must occur in comprehensive, thoughtful manners that build the strength and unity of working people, keeps family together, and guarantees the same rights, obligations, and basic fairness for all workers, no matter where they come from. Whereas comprehensive immigration reform must include a realistic pathway to citizenship for all hard-working, tax-paying, aspiring citizens who live in the U.S., if they meet reasonable requirement. And whereas the comprehensive immigration reform must provide a mechanism for aspiring citizens who have grown up in this country to become citizens and be able to fully contribute to our joint future. And whereas comprehensive immigration reform must update the legal immigration system so that future flow of immigrant workers more realistically matches our nation's labor, and is instructed to protect the wages and working conditions of U.S. and immigrant workers. Whereas any new worker's visa program must provide for strict compliance with the U.S. labor standards and wage and hour standards, portability of visas so that workers can change jobs, and the ability for workers to petition for permanent residency. And whereas comprehensive immigration reform must reduce the unreasonable wait times and arbitrary rules that keep families separated from the lone ones. And whereas comprehensive immigration reform enforcement provision must restore respect for love by promoting strict adherence to our nation's values, including due process, civil and human rights, accountability, and proportionality. And whereas internal and border law enforcement should focus on preventing criminals, drug cartels, and other bad actors from entering the U.S. or engaging in criminal activities. And whereas the city of Lawrence supports a comprehensive immigration reform bill that keeps family together, upholds our values as nation, promotes economic growth, and provides a long-term solution to the immigration system. And whereas our elected official must create an immigration process that strengthens our nation's economy and lets aspiring citizens continue to contribute to our community, and now therefore be a resolved that the Lawrence City Council urges the 113 Congress to enact comprehensive immigration reform as outlined in this resolution that will address, number one, earned legalization with a path to citizenship, number two, update future immigrations of families and workers, number three, improve immigration enforcement and border security that is consistent with our nation's values. Be a further resolved that the members of the City Council for the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, affix the seal of the city of Lawrence, Massachusetts, here to this fourth day of June in the year 2013, and should cast a copy of this resolution to be delivered to the U.S. Speaker of the House, President of, President of the U.S. Senate, members of the Massachusetts General Assembly, the Governor of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Speaker of the House, and the President, and the Senate of the President. And I want to thank all of you for signing this resolution. As we all know, Lawrence is a city of immigrants. And, you know, we know how important this is for all of us. And I want to thank the eight of the councillors that's actually signed this, and they know how important this is to this community and this nation. And it was signed by Council Vice Chair Rivera, Council Sandy Almonte, Council Stella Reyes, Council Roger Toomey, Council Nada Aquino, Council Eileen Bernal, and Council Kentus Vasquez, and myself. Thank you for supporting this resolution.
Muy buenas tardes. No tengo palabras. Mi emoción es tan grande de recibir este apoyo para nuestros inmigrantes, para nuestro latino. Gracias, Mayor LaPlante. De todas formas, no firmaste, pero mi reverencia y mi agradecimiento siempre. No importa.
Good evening. I thank everyone for their signatures here tonight. I still appreciate Mark LaPlante, even though you didn't sign. Thank you for everyone else that, that did. You're still very, very welcomed and very loved by us. This is very emotional at this moment to receive this award and to be, to be privy to, to be able to be part of making this movement forward.
Mis sentimientos están grandes porque yo conozco pie a pie la vida que llevan las personas indocumentadas aquí.
My sentiments are because I know what it is to have to struggle and fight for the people who are undocumented that live here.
Tienen que vivir una vez. Nosotros llevamos, tenemos calor en nuestra casa. Estamos familias separadas. No le pagan como quieren. Lo maltratan, lo criminalizan. Son nuestro latino. No me importa donde yo tenga que llegar para abogar por mi latino.
I will do everything that I have to do with all the criminalization and all the bad aspects that are put towards us, but I will do whatever I can to make sure to represent our Latin, our Latin roots and our Latin image.
Amo a Lawrence.
I love Lawrence.
Mejoramente como ciudadana esta ciudad.
I took the vow to be a citizen of this city.
Y seguiré luchando y abogando y tocando puertas donde quiera que ellos tengan que llegar para nuestra reforma migratoria, para que nuestros 11 millones de inmigrantes y de padres separados estén unidos.
And I will do whatever it takes for 11 million immigrants to be together once again with their families who are separated at this moment, because they have migrated here trying to make a better living for their families.
En nombre de SEIU, del Coco Latino de SEIU, en solidaridad con todas nuestras familias separadas, ignoradas, criminalizadas.
In the name of all of our families that have been separated.
Estoy aquí de pie.
I am here standing.
Y un día.
And one day.
No van a ver la cara.
Our faces will be shown.
Con nuestra organización.
With our organization.
Pero van a pedir nuestro voto.
But they will ask for our votes.
Entonces nosotros decidiremos en ese momento.
And then we will decide at the moment.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Buenas noches.
Good night.
Le voy a dejar con mi compañero que es el coordinador de, de, de Massachusetts para el Coco Latino, yo soy la charla de Lawrence. Y aquí estaré, y necesito el apoyo de ustedes.
I represent the Charter of Lawrence, and I will now leave you with my.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Gracias a todos los miembros del consejo.
Thank you for all the members of the council.
Mi nombre es Vicente de la Rosa.
My name is Vicente de la Rosa.
Soy el coordinador de la, aquí en el estado de Massachusetts del Coco Latino.
And I'm the coordinator of SEIU for here in Massachusetts.
Y le doy gracias a todos los que firmaron y también los que no firmaron.
And I thank you all for the ones that signed and the ones that didn't for the resolution.
Esto va a ser un paso de apoyo.
This will be a step forward.
Porque se necesita realmente una reforma profunda.
Because we do need a reform.
A las leyes de inmigración en este país.
To the, to the rules of immigration of the city, of this state.
Y es necesario el apoyo.
And it's necessary.
De todos los electos, todos los elegidos.
That we have all the elected officials.
Para que se haga realidad, y se haga este sueño realidad en esta, en este país.
So that this dream could be come here.
Muchas gracias a todos.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator on the agenda, committee report, document 330, City Website Automatic Language
Translation. This item was submitted by, this item came out from the ordinance committee, Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. On Thursday, May 23rd, the ordinance committee did review this item. Currently, we have a, a translation feature on our website, which is there, but is not required by ordinance. So, the recommendation from the committee was to have it actually be ordnanced, and the motion came up with a unanimous favorable recommendation to obtain the requisite language from the city attorney and to order a public hearing, and to make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Madam Chair, we don't, we don't need a, a public hearing on this one.
Isn't that creating an ordinance?
No. What we're doing is just, just adding a, a policy on the, on the website.
But we, we have the policy on the website, but we actually want to make it an ordinance so that two years from now, when Council Vasquez and I are no longer here, and they say, "Oh, we don't want that policy anymore." Like, we, we want to make it an ordinance.
Fair enough. This motion on the table has been second to order a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say aye savage. Next item on the agenda is document 133, Transit Randa License, Fernando Santiago, 34 Greenwood.
34 Greenwood Street. This item came out from the ordinance committee, Madam Chair from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Council President. At that same Thursday, May 23rd meeting, this applicant did come before the ordinance committee. I'm just, this is the renewal of an existing license. Mr. Santiago was there and did come up from the subcommittee with the unanimous favorable recommendation to renew, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 134, request to use the Campagnon Cameron Park from June 6th through August 29th, every Thursday, excludes July 4th, and Hispanic week from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for an event named Rumba en Parque. This item came out from the ordinance committee, Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. Again, at that same May 23rd meeting, I'm gonna butcher your name, so I'm just gonna say the representative from the association did appear before us. She did explain the program that they're trying to create, and it seemed like a really nice program. It would be every Thursday on the date stated, and I just want to remind the committee, it seems like this situation will be very controlled. It does not seem like it'll be a loud situation. And what we're granting, or the motion that came out from the subcommittee was to recommend granting the approval. We would reserve the right to revoke it should it be really not what we anticipate. We're expecting almost like an exercise class, and if it was something different, obviously we'd have the right to revoke that.
You're expecting an exercise class?
No, but something very tame. I don't know what the right word is. It's not gonna be a crazy party.
No, no, no.
Something very, you, why don't you describe it to us? The applicant is here. She'd be better than I would.
Name and address for the record, please.
Name and address, Maria Veronica Antich, 31 Seer Drive. Like I explained last time, this is an event that right now is going on in, in Boston. In Boston, it's called salsa in the park. I've been there several times, and it never gets out of control. It's mainly a family event. Kids go there, youth go there. Is, we provide music, we provide the space, and people come and dance. That's, that's it.
But I guess my point was, it's in a controlled atmosphere. It's not with a lot of vendors present, it's not with.
There's, there's no vendors at all.
It's not a festival.
No, it's not a festival.
Very informal, yeah.
Yes.
So, yeah, I give the wrong impression when I said that, but I just want to stress that it's not a festival.
It's just not a zumba class. No, there's not.
Exactly. That too. It did come up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I think that when Ms. Antich was here two weeks ago, I was very intrigued as to what this project was gonna look like, and I went online and I searched what Boston is doing. And I have to tell you that now, I will try to go to yours. Most of the, most Thursdays, I'm gonna be here either in ordinance or now in budget and finance hearings. But I'm definitely gonna go to Boston also because they seem fun. It's, it's a, it's a great activity, and, you know, I just want to say thank you for bringing this to the City of Lawrence. I think that is needed to be able to provide activities to our families and youth and kids. So thank you very much for putting it out there.
Thank you for allowing it.
Anybody else? Council Tumi?
Yeah, and I'm just gonna bring up something that's been brought up many, many times before in reference to the type of functions that, you know, occur in the common, especially those where they have amplified sound. I see here you're gonna have amplified sound from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Is that correct?
Yes.
Like, can you give me an idea of like how loud the music is gonna be? Because the only reason I'm asking is, a lot of times, the sound that's carried is played extremely loud, and it carries all over the city. We constantly get phone calls from neighbors being unable to sleep or because of these, because of the loud music. Is this gonna be of that nature?
Now, the idea is to keep the sound in the space, in the park that has the, the floors and the, the stadium.
Stage?
Yes. Just in that space, not the whole city. Sorry.
No, well, well, I guess what I'm asking is, how loud do you, do you anticipate this to be?
I, I, I'm not a sound professional. I cannot really say.
Wait, you said no.
I, I can assure you, it's not gonna be disturbance for the rest of the city.
I have your assurance on that? I don't have a problem with it all. Thank you.
Anybody else? Council Amonte?
Just to provide a little more information to everyone who's at home listening, will there be any charge for the event and, and the time, the hours are on here, but any charge for the event? Anybody can come, and it's a family event, so that people at home know that it's nothing that we're charging, or that there's a fee to get in, or anything like that?
It, it will be a free event. There's no charge, and it will be the whole three hours. You can come at 6:00, you can come at 7:00, or just at 8:00. It doesn't matter. It's free.
That's awesome. Thank you so much.
Council Brown?
Thank you. I just, on the agenda, it actually states that it would not be the weekend, the week of the Fourth of July and the week of Semana Hispana, and it doesn't give the date for that, but the, that's this coming Thursday, Thursday, the 13th, is Semana Hispana, so obviously you wouldn't have it next week.
Okay, yes.
But that was, okay. Just wanted to stress that.
Anybody else?
Not that I can.
This motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is document 137, transfer render license, ice cream sales from vehicle Ricardo Sequinat, 53 Stevens Avenue. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. The applicant did come before us. This is the renewal of the existing ice cream truck. Mr. Sequinat lives over on Stevens Avenue. He's been before us several years in a row now, and it was a very straightforward renewal, and did come up from the subcommittee with a unanimous favorable recommendation, and I do make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, question?
Council Tumi?
Yes, I'm looking at his application here, and he says he's gonna operate from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Is this, is this, he's selling ice cream to kids with music, a musical thing?
He does have music on his truck. Yeah, we did talk about that at the subcommittee, and he does use the music because that's how you get the kids to come.
Yeah, but to 10 o'clock at night?
Um.
I thought there was some sort of an ordinance that it has to stop at 7:00?
I don't know about an ordinance that you have to stop that at 7:00.
Because I have, I have had complaints from people where these, these trucks go through the, through the neighborhood playing that music.
Let me just look at the ordinance right now. We require that they obtain a specific permit. We require that they renew it. I have heard of a complaint on Tower Hill of a, ice cream truck that was playing late one night. I know that wasn't Mr. Sequinat's truck, but I wasn't aware of an ordinance that specifically prohibited that. Do you, I don't see the applicant here, I guess, is my concern.
Is this the renewal, Madam Chair?
This is renewal, yeah. This particular ice cream, I don't know the other ice cream truck drivers. I don't want to pretend to, but I do know this particular ice cream truck driver, and he's extremely responsible. He lives in my neighborhood. He's, I've never had a complaint about him in particular, although I have had complaints about ice cream trucks in general.
Does he have a certain area that he covers? Or is he all over the city?
He's all over the city, and he's outside of the city too, but he is all over the city. Yeah, and I wish he was here because he could answer that question better than I can.
Anybody else? This motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 138, transfer render license, Antonio Javier. This item came out from the ordinance committee. Madam Chair from the ordinance.
Thank you, Council President. Again, at that same meeting, Mr. Javier was present. He is renewing his existing license, and it did come up from the subcommittee with a unanimous, unanimous favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it.
Gracias.
Next item on the agenda is document 140. Transfer render license, Olga Jimenez, 43 Texas Ave. Madam Chair from the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Council President. Again, at the same meeting, the applicant was present. We did go through the paperwork. It was in order, and it did come up from the subcommittee for renewal with the unanimous favorable recommendation, and I make that in the form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Gracias.
Buenas noches.
Next item on the agenda is document 178, parking enterprise fund. Balancing parking garage special revenues should be transferred to the garage enterprise fund for this, for the amount of $348,201.15 to be amended. This item came out from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item was before the Budget and Finance Committee, and it was sent up with a... That's what I thought happened. One moment, Mr. President.
Three to one.
This was sent up with a favorable recommendation. Can I do that as a former committee report?
Just to accept a committee report? Or it came up with a favorable recommendation?
To accept a committee report.
Do I hear second to accept the committee report? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Chair.
I think that you may want to entertain a motion and accept the matter. I don't.
Motion to approve?
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Discussion?
Council Rivera?
Thank you, Council President. This was before the Budget and Finance Committee. Initially, when we did this last year, we voted to separate the parking enterprise fund, the parking accounts from the general fund into a parking enterprise fund. We were, we were told there was gonna be all kinds of disastrous things happening because we wouldn't be able to pay for them if we didn't separate the fund and all that matter. I voted against it at that time. I thought it was a bad policy. We actually voted as a body against it, and then two minutes later voted for it. So I just want to make sure everybody remembers what we're talking about. But in that haste to vote for it, we did not actually vote to move the money. We voted to create the account. First, we voted not to create the account, then we voted to create the account. We did it in haste, and we did not actually vote to move the money. And that's what this is. And I'm gonna stand by the vote that I had before, which was not to create the account, and so not to move the money.
This motion, anybody else? This motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call. Yes.
Council LaPlante?
Yes. Yes.
Council Tumi?
Yes.
Council Reyes?
Yes.
Council Amonte?
Yes.
Council Quino?
Yes.
Council Bernal?
No.
Council Vice President Rivera?
No.
And Council President Moran?
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is document 139, review and acceptance of grants to the City of Lawrence Community Development Department for the Dana Farber Cancer Institute for $16,200, and receive supplemental funding for $6,500, for a total of $22,700. This item came out from the Budget and Finance, Finance Committee. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance.
Mr. President, this item was before the Budget and Finance Committee. It was sent up to the full council with a unanimous favorable recommendation. I do that as a form of a motion.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Council LaPlante?
All right. Have we received this grant money in the past? That would be my question.
Yeah, so we got, we voted once before, three, Mr. President. We voted for the, the initial amount, which was $16,000. We accepted that money already, and they've received an additional $6,500. And so they have to come back and tell us, hey, we got $6,500. Will we, will the city accept the $6,500? So that would make the total amount of the, but of the loan, of the, the funding, $22,700. From what I remember from the subcommittee hearing, it was because they had done such a good job with the funds that they got, they had supplemental money funded to them. This is all the same grant. They just got extra money after they had gotten the initial, initial award.
So, I'm sorry, I'm new to this.
It's okay.
Is this, so, they have received some money in the past, and this is an additional money, so whatever we did in the past as a city, we did a pretty good job at it, and then the awarding authority, Dana Farber Cancer, decided that they were gonna toss more money in our direction.
It's better than that. They got awarded $16,000 this year, and this year, they had extra money, and they donated the extra $6,500. It's the same award.
Can, can someone just give a nutshell as to what the money is used for? One of the comments I made several meetings ago is, I think it's good for us to know exactly what the goals were for the money, and apparently we achieved those goals, whatever those goals were. I just think it's good for us to know what, what those are. Can anybody from the administration speak on that?
Sorry, Council, I can't speak to the goals and objectives, but I think they, they did have a representative for community development at the, at the Budget and Finance session, and I think Sue Fink did provide some documents to the Budget and Finance, so I think it was the general gist of the grant itself. I don't have them with me, but hopefully they're in your package, but I think she explained what, what that grant was used for. Just to reiterate why it's coming back before the council is, it did come, departments can accept grants, they just can't expend the grant money once they receive it, and they need to come down to the council to expend the grant amount. So originally, they came down for $16,000, $16,200, and had authorization to expend up to $16,200 of those, those grant funds. So now that they received another $6,500, they need the authorization to expand, increase to $22,700.
I could, I could read from the MOU if you'd like.
Yeah, I'm just reading it now. So as I'm reading this, they're looking for us to do, conduct study activities, including focus groups, informant interviews, questionnaire administration. This is all out of the Lawrence Health, Mayor's Health Task Force.
Mm-hmm.
And then I guess we did such a good job of that, that there, people are getting paid a stipend of $21,000 to help work on this issue. As a coordinator, gets a stipend, some more money. You know, one of the things I want to commend, was he still here, Mr. Ranello, is that, you know, with, with his coming here and working as the Budget and Finance Director, what didn't happen in the past was that we never got these things. This just happened, right? We never got word of these things. This happened. So now, the good news is, is that we're now having a chance to take a look at them a little bit. I know it went to committee, and I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to review all that stuff in the committee, but Dana Farber Cancer, since it is a well-respected organization, they don't toss money around without there being some sort of, not some sort of reason to do so. So it seems as though a private institution such as they want to provide some money to the city, seem to be doing a good job, seems to me we should accept it. I don't want to make a bigger, bigger deal out of it, but I know I've been trying to I don't want to make a bigger, bigger deal out of it, but I know I've been trying to be consistent when it comes to grants coming down, that we have an idea of what this money's being used for, have they met those goals? Because we shouldn't be accepting every grant necessarily just because there's money there. But if it's a goal that we think is good, in this case, um, promoting health in our city, then maybe we should accept it. So, thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a final point on it. It's one of the things that allow, this grant allows the city to have a seat in coalitions across the community, in coalitions across the, the valley, um, and I think even to the state level. And Lawrence being such a big town, big city and being a great way city, a lot of the problems faced by the cancer institute, a lot of problems that they try to deter in prevention is, uh, is something they want us to be a part of and knowing that we have issues with funding, this allows the, uh, the Mayor's Health Task Force to be in places and advocate for the community of Lawrence, not only for other resources, but also for, um, for the needed healthcare benefits that we, we, um, we most desperately need. So I just want to make sure this is definitely something that's positive for the city.
Thank you. Anybody else? This motion on the table has been second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls, the ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is document 145, MV Whip Temporary Funding Allocation for FY twenty-fourteen, up to six hundred thousand. Item came out from the Budget and Finance Committee. Mr. Chair from the Budget and Finance.
Mr. President, this item was before the Budget and Finance Committee and was sent up, um, to the full council with a favorable unanimous agreement pending some information, pending an order from the Director of Finance with, um, with line item grants, except for grant, the accepted grant funding in the amount of five million, five hundred seventy thousand and an authorization to draw down upon that. The reality is this is the first time that we're interacting with the, the, the Mary McValley Whip, that's the Mary McValley Workforce Investment Board. And another effort of Mr. Iannello is to bring those guys into the fold. It's not coming in as easily, not because of resistance, but just, you know, it's paperwork and administrative issues. The director was here, um, so I'd like to do this as a form of a, of a committee report because the director was here and they're still not have, they still don't have everything ironed out. So we'd like, they wanted us to send it back to committee. So if I can do that as a committee report?
Uh, this motion on the table, take it as a committee, actually, you don't even have to, you can just send it back to the Budget and Finance Committee.
Without voting on it?
I'm going to resend this item back to the Budget and Finance Committee.
That makes it easy.
Next item on the agenda is withdrawn document 142 dash thirteen, Las Palmas Restaurant requests permission to place four tables and chairs in front of their businesses at four forty-five Essex Street from three P.M. to one A.M. This item was submitted by Maria Thomas, came out from the Orders Committee. Man in chair from the Orders.
Thank you, Council President. At the, um, subcommittee level, um, the applicant did come before us requesting placing tables and chairs on the sidewalk. It was brought to our attention that that establishment serves alcohol and there may be some confusion. My understanding was that the application was to serve alcohol on the sidewalk, which would have to go before the licensing board. But I, I don't know if the district counselor would have a better sense of...
I had a conversation with the, uh, the owner of this restaurant when I heard about this item being withdrawn. She called me and all she wants to do is just have lunch or serve food outside. I, I'm not sure if you remember, the restaurant right across the street from here used to have the same issue. But they were able to have chairs and tables and chairs outside. The only thing they couldn't do was serve alcohol. If they wanted to serve alcohol outside, they had to go back to the licensing board to get permission to serve alcohol. So according to the owner of the restaurant, all she wants to do is just serve food outside. Not liquor. Liquor, she's going to have to go before the licensing board. And, and my, my opinion will be to table this item to have, uh, the owner come before the city council, the whole entire body, so we can all listen, uh, from her to make sure we're all, we're all in the same, we all hear from the same person what she really wants to do.
Okay.
Because it's this speculation that she wants to serve alcohol, we all know that's not the case.
So...
At least I know.
So what we are going to do is table or send it back to ordinance?
We're going to table it here.
And she can come in from here and she doesn't have to go through ordinance?
As long as she has all the paperwork, yeah. Do you, I mean, I wasn't at the Orders Committee last, at last meeting.
I have to say, because that happened before the meeting started, I didn't look at her paperwork to see if it was complete. So, um, you raise a good question.
You know what? I'll send it down to the Orders Committee if that's the case. I'll send this item back, back down to the Orders Committee.
I think it makes more sense. Send it back to, yes. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is old business, document fifty-five, appropriation order, authorization to borrow extraordinary repairs for the Gilmet School, uh, counselor, we, uh, for three point five million dollars. We took a vote on the meeting, trying to remember last time when the meeting was, to, to authorize us to, to borrow this kind of money. Uh, but according to the city attorney, we have to take an additional vote to rectify the bond and we never did that. Uh, so we have to order public hearing and, uh, so we can rectify this, this, uh, this bond on our next meeting. So I'm just looking for a motion to order a public hearing on this particular bond.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls, the ayes have it. Next item is table matters. Anybody wants to take anything off the table? If not?
Yeah.
Oh, Counselor? Uh, let's see, Gilmet School, I have one item here that I need to take off the table.
One forty-one, one forty-seven?
Looking for a motion to take document one forty-one thirteen off the table?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls, the ayes have it. Uh, document one forty-one, change of full location, the Gilmet School District D two. Item was submitted by William J. Maloney, city clerk. Mr. Clerk?
Good evening, Councilors. Since, uh, last appearing before you on this matter, um, we've obtained the approval of the administration to go ahead in the cooperation of the fire department to use the fire alarm station as a substitute pole location right next door to the Gilmet School. I've notified the Secretary of State's Office of our intention to do so. The city attorney has been in communication with the Secretary of State's Office and, um, the best way I can explain the Secretary of State's Office without speaking for them is they make no comment whatsoever and they leave that to us. Uh, and I mean, uh, to the council or to the city. Uh, the next step along this road, uh, to move this along is to, uh, solicit the approval of the city council, who is the overseer of elections essentially directly. Short of that, the, uh, the election division cannot do anything else.
Councilor Rivera?
Thank you, Council President. So, uh, there's an election coming up on June twenty-fifth?
June twenty-fifth.
And people will go to vote, that would normally voted to Gilmet, they'll go to vote where if we pass this tonight?
Right next door, at the fire alarm station on the hill. Uh, we had done a similar thing on an emergency basis when we found mold, uh, a week before. Uh, we're a little bit ahead of that game right now.
Where is it?
It's directly right next door. Eighty Bardwell Street is the address for Gilmet School. Sixty Bardwell Street is the location. We intend to have the, uh, cooperation and assistance of VPW with signage, lighting, arrows, a poll worker outside soliciting or at least informing people to go there. I've got enough time. I've already contacted our publisher and our printer. We can put it not only on our website, but also send postcards to voters directly at their households.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, Mr. President.
Do I hear second? Any discussion?
And wait to thirty days?
Second.
That's good.
I don't have thirty.
Good catch.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls, the ayes have it.
Thank you, Councilors.
Anybody else want to take anything off the table?
I'd take document number, what, two seventy-eight twelve off the table?
Two seventy? So move. All those, uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls? Yes, have it.
Council President, this is the, the issue dealing with the tax credit for senior volunteers is the one that Council Bernal has been on, the lead on this. But I can't help it out since Mr. Iannello was here to at least get an update as to where that is. He is not prepared for this, nor did I give a heads up on this, so he's really cold called. Mr. Iannello, do you have any information regarding, through you, Mr. President, the tax credit for senior volunteers and where that currently stands?
Sorry, Counselor, I, I don't have an update on that, but, uh, I'll try and have it for the next council meeting. Thank you. You're welcome.
Move from table. Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls, the ayes have it. Going to new items, new business?
Oh, Council President?
Yeah, he did, yeah. Newton at the wheel. Um, Council President, I wanted, do I take document number one forty-seven dash thirteen off the, um, table?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Polls, the ayes have it. Document one forty-seven, parking facilities, outside audits. Item was submitted by Council Bernal. Council Bernal?
Thank you, Council President. We had at our, um, last meeting, which was an unscheduled meeting or an special meeting, we had the overseer here to talk with us and at that time I did ask him specifically if he would work with us to have an outside audit. He did get us a price quote. I know he emailed that to everyone yesterday. I'm not sure if it's in our packages, but we definitely got it. Powers and Sullivan's audit. He also sent us notice today that he does have funds in his budget that we would not have to make an appropriation. Um, so that's not something that we would be looking to fund. There, there are funds available specifically for, um, audits in his budget and he would allocate funds for this. So I don't know if we actually have to move to adopt the outside audit or, we do have a, um, a written proposal from the auditor, basically of what their costs and fees would be. We know that there are funds in the overseer's budget to pay for that. And I, I think it behooves us to take an affirmative vote that we endorse that action and we, um, I don't know if empower or authorize or whatever, the overseer to do that for us, but I, I would like to take action on that.
Councilor Rivera?
I, I mean, we got the, uh, the proposal and, eh, as it reads, it's based on our, their initial discussions, we expected the engagement to take about sixty hours, um, and their fee would be approximately ten thousand dollars, um, that they'll bill monthly as the pro, the work progresses. Um, they were gonna do, uh, review the gar, the garage cash collection policies and procedures, obtain an understanding of the internal controls, plan and conduct interviews of personnel with knowledge of the cash collection, perform an analysis of parking garage collections before and after twenty-ten, evaluate evidence upon, obtained in step three and five, prepare preliminary findings, discuss preliminary findings, um, if necessary, obtain additional evidence and reevaluate evidence gathered, uh, determine if a formal written report is needed, discuss the draft, reports with management based on the results, um, meet with management, finalize the report, perform any necessary follow-up procedures. That's what they said they'd do. Um, I just wonder if, I, I saw the email too that we got from the overseer. I was wondering if Mr. Iannello thinks that we need to actually take a vote for them to move that money from that account? Or was that just for them to expend it from that account?
Presently, there's enough money in, in the overseer's account to pay for this audit, uh, so that our intention was to pay it out of his, uh, funds. But I just want to reiterate, that's an estimate, estimated fee of ten thousand. If it's more, uh, or, or if we have to do a, a little something extra, we may be back in front of the council at that time if we need, uh, a transfer. But so far, he's got enough money in his account, uh, that he's not going to use in the next month, so we'll use that.
Yeah. So I'd like to support Council, Councilor Bernal's, um, motion to support the efforts of the overseer in doing the audit.
Yeah, I, I, I support it, I mean, it's, even though it's a symbolic vote, uh, but it sends a message of what we want to do. I agree. Anybody else? Council two?
Just a question. Uh, Council Rivera, you mentioned several items there. Is there a way we can get a copy of those things that you're talking about?
I, I printed out of the email we got from the news, from, uh, from the overseer, Mr. Nunes, but I'll make sure that everyone gets a copy.
Okay.
It's in the email. But we'll make sure we get a copy.
Okay, thank you.
Council LaPlante?
Is there a motion? Are we, are we, I didn't know if there are, if I heard a motion. Can you repeat, can a clerk repeat the motion?
Motion wants to send a, a letter supporting? Is that what your motion was?
Well, I want to send a letter supporting unless we need an affirmative vote asking him to, but I believe we're already beyond that, that this is happening.
We don't, we don't need a vote because it's already in his budget, so it's out of our jurisdiction.
We're not asking for a vote at this time, but we may if we do need a transfer.
Correct. Okay.
But it'd be nice to be on record.
I think if you want to send a symbolic vote, just saying that we support him, we could do that, but at this point, we don't need a vote from the city council. It's out of our jurisdiction. He has plenty of money on his account.
I guess this is my concern and this is why I wanted us to take an affirmative action is, we know he has a quote for the services with an reputable agency. We know he has the money in his budget to do this. I don't think there's anything that actually requires him to do this. So that's why I was looking for an affirmative vote from this body to say that we support or encourage or endorse or maybe even stronger than support. Like I think that we're, I don't know if we want to say we're demanding it, but we are, we want that to happen, that it's not, we, he's never actually said, I will definitely do this. At least I haven't been aware of that. So, I, I mean, I want just to send something that it's our understanding that he is going to do this and that we're grateful that, we're not grateful, that we want this to happen. I mean, the funds are there, the price quote is in place, the certified accountant is reputable, all those good things are there, but he could wake up tomorrow and say, you know, I changed my mind, I really don't want to do this.
You can take a vote, uh, the authorization to proceed to have the, uh, the audit, uh, conducted by Powers and Sullivan's. We're going to have something like that.
Sounds good.
Second.
Second to motion?
So, so, thank you for the motion. So my, my, my question then is, uh, a couple. Uh, one is, you know, Powers and Sullivan has been in, an accounting firm that has been doing audits for our city for the last three or four years. And I understand why we're comfortable in going with them. My question is, are there procurement laws in the fact that they've got to go forward and actually since it's over ten thousand dollars, you go ahead and at least put it out to bid to see what other kind of accounting agencies, you know, would bid on it? Or are we just going to simply award this firm?
I can speak to that, Counselor. The, uh, first of all, audits are outside the, uh, procurement laws. However, we did procure Powers and Sullivan a few years ago and solicited quotes from, uh, from different CPA firms and they were awarded the proposal. And as part of that award process, I asked, uh, for the, uh, for a price quote in case there's any additional work that needs to be done outside of the annual city audit, what would their, what would the fees be? And that's where this, uh, this particular engagement comes into play. So I've already got them engaged to do, uh, uh, similar, uh, things like this that they have done in the past, uh, and, and we already have a, a contract in place to, to, to start that process. But it is, it's not subject to, to bid rules, audits, uh, of CPA services are not, are excludable from thirty, thirty B.
Interesting. So one of the points that I was going to drive at is, I think that we should go ahead with the audit number one. I just want to be on the record of supporting that. What I would like to see happen is for us to go even outside the comfort zone of an organization that has already been involved in the city's accounting, uh, processes. I think that, while I understand there's a code of ethics and that, that they are required by law to act in a certain way, yes, they are reputable and yes, you know, that, but, but my sense is that I'd like for us to really go outside of the box, find someone who's not at all familiar with the city of Lawrence, with its mechanisms, with its stuff, and get a fresh set of eyes to look at what's happening there, rather than an accounting firm that has been seeing this repeatedly now two, three or four years in succession. I'd like to bring someone fresh here to take a look at that. And, and without putting things out to bid, I'm just not sure who out there would be of some interest to us. I know there's approximately three or four different firms that might consider such a project or initiative. That's what I'm told, but, um, but that's what I would like to see happen. So that's one. The second thing is, and I think we alluded to this earlier in the earlier conversation by some of the other counselors, is that this really is a mayoral call. I mean, if the mayor decides that he does not want to go forward with this audit, there's no audit that's going to be done. This is a function of the mayor. He is the CEO, he has the authority to go ahead and then, and then conduct and expend money. We can't expend money unless it's outside of the council. That's the discussion that I had earlier today with some of the senior, senior officials. But, um, so the concern that I have here is that we've got, um, obviously there's an active investigation going on. We've all read and understand what that means. We understand what the allegations are. We understand through reports that there, you know, that there may be ties to certain We understand through reports that, you know, that there may be ties to certain individuals, certain elected individuals potentially. And, and then having someone make that call who may have some jurisdiction over that potentially, this is all, you know, nothing's been proven yet, so I can't speak in definitives. But it just seems as though I don't see some, I don't see the mayor necessarily falling through on going ahead and no one else is hurt unless he's talked to some of the other folks, even the council.
I just wanted to, and I don't mean by point of information.
Sure.
I think I actually misspoke earlier because I didn't read my emails, but I didn't recall them as well as I thought I did. Mr. Nunes actually says he authorized, he uses very affirmative language, that he authorizes the expenditure of $10,000 in the FY 10, FY 13 overseer's budget for the forensic audit. So he specifically says, this is Mr. Nunes taking it.
Nunes authorized it, not the mayor.
Not the mayor, and he already has it in his budget, so he can do this. And it just says, "There's no council transfer required." Mark being Mr. Ianello. "Mark, please coordinate the execution of the contract with Mail Antigua and Dick Sullivan, Sullivan of Sullivan Powers."
So is my premise off base then? Can, can the overseer unilaterally decide that he's going to put this money to that without the mayor initiating it or being a party to it?
It's already...
I'm just curious.
It's already in his budget, so he doesn't need...
I get, I get your, no, I don't mean to be offensive. I just, I want to hear from the administration.
Administratively, administratively, the mayor signs all warrants, so before any payment can be made, the mayor has to sign a warrant for payment to any firm. The mayor also approves any purchase orders. We'll put a purchase order for this request. The mayor would be approving that. So we haven't, the mayor is not opposed to having the audit.
Point of information?
Point of information, Counsel Rivera?
Yeah, so I just want to be clear. I think that Counsel LaPlante is right. There is a form, a formal process the mayor plays in this in signing off on the expenditure. But Mr. Nunes, through the, through the legislation, has the right to override this council and the mayor on any expenditure. That's just a fact. Mr. Nunes has not done that to date. I think that if we're in that situation, he's affirmed to move on an audit that's really important, it's forensic, everybody's concerned about it. I would think, again, call me maybe naive on this, but I would think that the overseer will override the mayor and this council if we decided we didn't want the audit and he wanted it. That's just, that's just the powers. I think that there is an, the mayor does have to sign off. And I think in the instance where the mayor doesn't sign off, the overseer has the power. Now, I think a lot of us have been disappointed in this, in that sense to date. But, you know, I'm disappointed he's not here this evening either, but all that being said, I think we need to get that, just make sure everybody knows that the governor has appointed him through the legislation to be able to override both this body and the mayor.
Yeah, I, and it's been a while since I've last read that, that language. And my immediate impression is I'm not sure I totally agree with that premise. I do know that the, that things go through Nunes, the overseer has the ability to block something from going through. I don't know if Nunes has, the overseer has the authority to initiate something. So I just, I, I like to know that that's true. I'm not sure that it is. So, anyway, the long and the short of it, this may all be moot because what I'm hearing from Mr. Ianello is that the mayor is willing to go ahead and go forward with this. You just said that, and I want to make sure I'm not putting words in your mouth.
We just received the engagement letter from, an engagement letter to delineate, which I think Counsel Rivera just mentioned, delineated what the steps we're asking the outside auditor to do. And that engagement letter needs to be signed. That I'll have the mayor sign that engagement letter before the work begins, so everybody understands what work is to be done. It's already been approved by, by Mr. Nunes. I've already looked at the engagement steps and I've approved it. So now we're just gonna ask the mayor to approve it and then begin the work.
What's your opinion about going to a different firm?
Well, it would just take longer. I understand what some of the, I've heard this argument before, let's get a different auditor, but these auditors, Powers and Sullivan does not have any affiliation with the city of Lawrence. They aren't involved in our operations in any way. They are independent as to what they do in the city of Lawrence. And I, and I think because they, they've already documented some of our processes and procedures, they kind of have a leg up on another firm coming in. So I think they can get the work done a little more efficiently and effectively without any hindrance to their independence.
My opinion is...
Again, if I could just, I speak as a CPA, so I've been on this side. I mean, if I'm auditing someone's books and then they ask me to do something else, it would be kind of silly. Oh geez, why don't you get somebody else to do that, something else, as long as it's audit-related? Why don't you just ask the same auditor to continue and do something on? Which is something, you know, I've drafted into this contract because when you're doing a, the annual audit of the city, it's just a, it's an opining on the financial statements of the city of Lawrence. And, and if there is anything within the audit that comes out, you'd like them to do a little extra work, you'd like to have the agreement already in place. And that's exactly what we're asking for here.
What's the, what's the nexus and the involvement between the auditors? And again, I can't speak to this authoritatively because it's just stuff that I've read with this so-called investigation that's going on. I mean, are they going to be overlapping? I mean, can they get the information? Is, is one doing one going to impede somebody else's, another organization's work?
If there's an investigation by law enforcement authorities, that's not going to be shared with, I'm sure, certain, law enforcement authorities are not going to share their work with the CPAs.
No, I, I...
That's true.
Sure, sure. But I don't know, but are they gonna, so what is it that these, that the CPA is going to find, the auditors are going to find? Irregularities, which is essentially if you believe the law enforcement, that's what they're looking for, right?
It's delineated in the engagement letter. They're going to review the garage receipts over the last several years. They're going to, you know, get an understanding of the systems and controls, and they're going to do a number of steps that are delineated in the engagement letter.
Right, I mean, I applaud, I applaud the, I applaud the counselor who, and, and the co-sponsor for putting this on the agenda and making it happen because I do think that this needs to take place. What I, what I don't want is, you already heard my point, so I'm not going to repeat it. I'm going to support whatever's here. I hope that the mayor will, will listen to what I had to say on this issue. And hopefully, we can move on it quickly. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Clerk, can you please repeat the motion?
Motion by Counsel Brunel to authorize a proceed to audit by Powers and Sullivan, or Sullivan Powers. Seconded by Counsel Vice President Rivera.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Counsel, I'm going to combine document 147 and 148 because it's a pretty much similar document. And I'm going to send it down to the ordinance committee, which, I'm going to jump into new business, document 148, Lawrence Parking Garages, Review of Fees and Collections. The item was submitted by Counsel Vice Chair Rivera and Counsel Brunel. So I'm going to combine 147 and 148. Or we can, Counsel, if you want, we can withdraw the document 147 and just stick with 148. whichever is easier for you.
I think we should fold the, do you, Mr. President? I think we should fold the 148-13, fold into 147-13, it'd be great.
So, sending this document down to the ordinance committee. Next item in agenda, new business is document 149, National Grid, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures on Broadway at the intersection of Allentown Street, submitted by Jason Dwyer, supervisor distribution design. It's going down to the ordinance committee. Document 150, National Grid, request permission to place underground electric conduit on Broadway. I hope I'm not butchering this last name. Jason, is it Dwyer? I hope. It's going down to the ordinance committee. Document 151, Transfer Render License, 25 Basswood Street, it's going down to the ordinance committee. Document 154, Lawrence Evangelical Church, request permission to use the Campa John Common Park, the corner of Lawrence and Havrell Street on June 5th, 8th, 15th, 22nd, and 29th. Obviously, the 5th and the 8th, we won't be able to use it. We need to send a letter to them just to let them know they won't be...
The president, the thing is also during Semana's festival.
Yeah, who's gonna...
Not the 15th either? Okay. So there's 5th, 8th, and 15th. So actually, it's going to be June 22nd, 29th, July 6th, 13th, 20th, 27th, and on August 3rd, 10th, 17th, 24th, and 31st for a religious event.
5, 8, and 15 eliminate.
Eliminate 5, 8, and 15. I'm sure there'll be before as on Thursday, won't be able to let them know anyway. Item was submitted by Robert McHugh, pastor. It's going down to the ordinance committee. Document 155, Proposal on the Ordinance Amendments for 320 South Broadway, submitted by John T. Smolak Square. Oh, it sounds familiar. It's going down to the ordinance, it's going down to the ordinance committee and also is going to the planning, planning board as well. Next item in agenda is document 156, Stop Sign, Essex Street and corner of Ames Street. Currently, a two-way stop at the location. Item was submitted by Counsel Two, it's going down to the ordinance committee. Document 157, HatLawrence.com, request, request permission to use the O'Neill Park in conjunction with Semana's banner festival to land a helicopter for a ride on Sunday, June 16th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And I was, I was approached by Counsel Vasquez earlier today. I guess the petition or the person that requested this item asked to withdraw it.
That is correct, Mr. President. I, I wish it was not withdrawn. I think that this is a fascinating idea, something new, something different in the city of Lawrence. But due to limits in the time, they asked to be withdrawn. It will be coming next year.
I know, that was incredible. So I'm looking for a motion, is there a motion on the table? I'm looking for a second to withdraw the item.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Document 158, Zoning Amendment, Location of Fences, submitted by Don McCarthy, Land Use Planner. It's going down to the ordinance committee. Document 159, Trees on City Property on Greenfield Street and Their Impact on Resident Home, submitted by Counsel LaPlante. It's going down to the Housing Committee. Document 160, Transfer Render License, 305 Lowell Street, submitted by Obali Patilla. It's going down to the ordinance committee. Madam Chair, we have ordinance.
You know, there's a budget and finance meeting this Thursday, and we were talking about possibly doing ordinance early, but I just want to ask the committee members, if we met next Thursday on the 13th, would that work for people?
When is that?
Next Thursday, the 13th? Is that an option?
That's fine.
Next?
Next Thursday?
Yeah.
So not this Thursday? Not in two days, like normal?
Okay.
Okay.
I forgot a document. Document 162, Groundwork Lawrence, request permission to use the Campa John Park on Wednesday from 10:00 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. for the farmer's market starting July 10th, submitted by Rosa Pina Outreach and Events Manager. Item is going down to the ordinance committee.
6:30?
Ordinance.
Okay. You announced that now? All right. Do it, sir.
Just a quick order on the others of the schedule. I just realized that we, on the 13th, we will be, we are set to do the special council meeting. It's actually the, that's the idea for now. So if we do the special council meeting on the 13th, it's one of the public hearings, then we won't do that, but that should be the meeting to do the whole thing.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair from the Housing Committee?
Yeah, typically, we would have a meeting on next Monday, but because of my personal matters taking place on that day, I was wondering if we could move it to the 17th, which is the day before. I'm not sure what the Budget Committee's schedule is. Is there a meeting for the Budget Committee on the 17th?
Mr. President, we have a scheduled inaugural forum that night.
Oh, okay.
But wouldn't be here, it would be out in the morning.
Okay, if, if, if my colleagues don't mind, we could have it on that day. And the 10th is now open for any other committee meetings, whether it be ordinance or budget as well, because we're not going to have it on that day. So if it's all right with everybody else, 17th, 7 o'clock. 17th, day before the full city council meeting, 7 o'clock. And I got a question for you, Counsel President. Have you given any thought to the summer schedule?
I will be, soon as I, we figure as we get closer to taking the final vote on, on the budget, I'll come up with a summer schedule. As of right now, I haven't done it yet, but we'll see how it goes. We might have to be here in July. Anybody else?
Budget and Finance Committee?
Yes. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we do have, after tonight, the very next time the Budget and Finance Committee will meet. Please.
After tonight's meeting. Sorry about that. After tonight's meeting, the next time the Budget and Finance Subcommittee will meet will be to review the FY 14 budget and conduct hearings. We're, on Thursday, that's going to be on the 6th, which is Thursday night, and it's going to be, we're going to review the revenues. We're going to go over the following departments, budget and finance, the Controller's Office, purchasing, IT, the Assessor's Office, Treasurer's Office, the Fiscal Overseers Office, Fiscal Overseers Office, excuse me. We're going to talk about debt service, risk management, and other financial issues. That'll be on Thursday. And just as a precursor to that, on Friday, we're going to meet at 6:30. We're going to talk about the mayor's office budget, the personnel budget, the employees' benefits, veteran services budget, recreation, inspectional services, public health, licensing,